All right, we'd like to welcome everyone here for our city council, all those who are in our chambers and all those who are watching on TV land. I've asked Ally Taylor to come and give us our invocation.
Or a little thought?
I'll do my thought first. So, my name is Ally Taylor. Councilman Argyle had contacted me and wondered if I would share with the council an experience I had this past August at a leadership training. I attended a program called Freedom Academy, which is hosted by the Utah National Guard. In the last week of July, I headed up to Camp Williams with a giant suitcase and an open mind. One of my first, one of the first phrases said to me was, "Freedom isn't free." On Sunday, those sounded like words that had no meaning behind them, but by Friday morning, not only did I know what those words meant, but I knew the sacrifices behind those simple phrases. Throughout the week, we learned things such as the right to a fair trial and the defense of our freedoms. We gained a new understanding of our freedoms that we have in America and our freedom of speech. While I, while attending, I got to experience things that I might otherwise not have had the opportunity to. We got to go to the Capitol and talk to Governor Gary Herbert and toured the Capitol Building. We talked to a federal judge, as well as we got to watch him sentence a felon. We toured a KC-135 refueling tanker at the Utah Air National Guard and raced against their firemen in a really fun challenge. We learned about the First Amendment as we toured KUTV and saw all the behind-the-scenes effort that goes into every single story. And we also got to tour the prison and got to see a glimpse of what they do in their everyday lives and some of the privileges that some have that others wouldn't in the prison. We had many laughs as we were yelled at by drill sergeants. We played in the pool and performed in talent shows, but also many tears were shed as we had multiple immigrants share their stories with us, how they became, how they came to our beloved country and their views on our freedoms. We also got the opportunity to speak to a former prisoner of war. Jay Hess was confined to a small dirty room for six years in Vietnam with John McLean. I cannot put my, I cannot put into words the feelings of gratitude I received during my week at Camp Williams. My eyes were opened to a whole other world. I was oblivious to the little and simple freedoms that we have. Were so profoundly brought to my attention. And our country is so privileged and so blessed. My love for the Army and the men and women who constantly serve us grew so much. And by the end of the week, I realized that freedom is not free and I am so thankful for the opportunity that I had to realize that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Our tear going gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful for the opportunity that we have to come here as a community and be able to gather together. And we're thankful for the council members and blessed that they will be guided to make right decisions and blessed that they will have this spirit with them and blessed that as we all go our separate ways that we will be safe and be watched over and protected. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ally.
Thank you.
I've asked Councilman Scobes to lead us in pledge allegiance.
Giants, please rise.
Feed the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to excuse Councilman Mendenhall and Councilmember Beck. They're both out of town tonight and so we do have a quorum, so we're good. We'll be fine. All right, so let's start with council comments. Councilman Argal.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything this evening.
Okay. Councilman Scobes.
Mayor, just want to report, the Fine Arts Committee met this last week, started looking at the Harvest Moon Hurrah. They also had an internal report on RAP funding, things that were, that were authorized and approved through the RAP tax that will go directly to the arts and projects that they have. There is also a report on the Youth Arts Festival and as well as the Community Theater, things that took place during the, during the summer, during fester days. I'll have numbers to those, of those festivals and things next meeting, but really looking forward to the Harvest Moon Hurrah that they have volunteers for. And someone who, who volunteered in a big way to step in is another big, I guess a big hat wearer, bigger volunteer to work with the Fine Arts Committee. So, things are moving along and just looking forward to more of the things that they have planned for the community. That's all.
Thank you. Councilman Gordon.
Mayor, probably invite Heather up from the chamber if she's got some things to share with us first.
So, September's a busy month. We still have the farmer's market going. We still are running the food truck nights on Main Street until they kind of start to dwindle, so those will probably run through September. On September 5th, this Thursday, we have a ribbon cutting for venue sports cards. On the 10th, we are having an information meeting for any potential board members that would like to be a part of the Chamber Board. We're having an information meeting about that and a lunch, so. And then on the 12th, we have our Business of the Month, which is Revere Health. They're doing it at their new Spanish Fork Clinic, so we'll plan on that one at noon. We're running our very first street fair on Main, which runs in conjunction with the farmer's market. The first one will be on the 7th. It's just across the street in the Library Park. That's for vendors that are selling non-food items, crafts and different things like that, so. On the 18th is our new networking luncheon up at Canyon View Park. We're planning on Wells Fargo coming to speak about financial, I can't remember. Something financial.
Something to do with money.
Yes.
Next chance.
All right, and then we have another ribbon cutting on the 19th for Salon de la Paz. We are planning on the Harvest Moon Hurrah on the 21st. We have arranged for some pumpkins, thanks to Brandon's dad. We have faces and we're all ready. And then we have ribbon cutting on the 26th for shootology, so that will be kind of fun.
Quick question.
Yeah.
So, with the farmer's market, I know this year and I've even a couple of them that's, I've talked to that have been here, because of our wet season, a lot of them was delayed four or five weeks. Some of them even are only going to have one, not so many peaches and stuff. Are we going to extend that a little bit?
No, because they usually kind of die out by the end, towards the end. That's really mostly just pumpkins and squash and that type of thing. We, we lose a lot, so they'll still have a lot of time to get rid of their, any of the stuff that they have, so. That's all I have.
Cool, thanks Heather. The one story was personal experience I was going to share about the farmer's market was, like she mentioned, Dad, pumpkins coming up Harvest Moon Hurrah. Well, we've done this since the late 90s, even when it was over at the Library Park. And over the last few years, people would say, "Hey, do you take cards? Do you, you know, can you take a, a card through?" And some of the vendors got square and things. Well, my little sister set my dad up two weeks ago on Venmo. And if you've ever seen a kid in the candy store, it is so funny to watch a 70-year-old's first experience with, with Venmo and seeing it ding on his phone that he's received payment. It's been a lot of fun and so, great, great effort. Still continue on at the farmer's market. It's just, it's just fun to, to see this thing how it's evolved too.
As it does.
As I always say, the best farmer's market in the state, because we've sold it many, many, so.
It's crowded.
It's awesome. It's very good. I don't have anything on the fire station report. Do we have a, I was trying to find my timeframe in terms of the ribbon or the groundbreaking.
Sorry, go ahead Scott. So, the groundbreaking will be on Wednesday, October 2nd at noon.
Mm-hmm.
Stuff at the side there on 2651 or 20, 2651 or 25?
2651 East Cameron Road.
Okay. And if you see any work going on up there, it's just to get some of the overhead utilities underground and so, so that work is going on there. And then, like they just said, the ribbon, or the groundbreaking rather, will be, will be coming up soon. Ribbon cutting next summer. Was able, Mayor, to attend a Utah Water Quality Board meeting last Wednesday up in Salt Lake. It's always interesting to me as cities come to this board, which has funding to be able to help cities that are sort of in a need. And in a couple of cases, watching their sewer rates, they're, they're taking their sewer rates from $25 a month up to the $55 to $60 a month range. And it's, it's just this ginormous jump for some of these cities. And, and if you look at Spanish Fork, our average is $27 now. And, and we, we have a plan to keep that in line and not get into a situation where we just have to, just more than double our sewer rates. And so, appreciate Corey Pierce attending that with me and that, that meeting and being very conscious about changes that need to take place at our sewer treatment facility and our wastewater. Just because they're so important and it's a, it's a large, it's a large item on our monthly utility bill. And so, just amazing again to see cities come and, and ask for grant money or even a loan. And truth be told, they just haven't planned and prepared. And so, it's, it's really hard for me to, to wear that hat on that board and, and I literally find myself giving them advice to, you know, do what we have done here and what staff has recommended. So, that's really all I have to report from that board meeting and that's all I have, Mayor.
Great, appreciate it. I've just got a couple of things. We had a great event, the Planes, Trains and Automobiles last week. I think we doubled our attendance there. That's becoming a great event. It was really cool to see all the different planes and the shows that went on. The drag race, I had a front row seat on that and that was pretty cool. I'm still trying to get my lungs cleared out from all the burnouts, but other than that, it's, but it's awesome to see that many people come down and Gal Halverson, the Candy Bomber, was there and dropped his candy. And as you know, we've got a learning center that we're building, trying to build down there and so they're raising money for that. So, anyone that would like to contribute to that fund, they would appreciate that. They would like to see that happen and so. He's 94? 94? He, yeah, we'd like to get it built while he's still here. But I think he's going to outlast most of us. He was, he's pretty spry, so it's pretty cool. Uh, next thing, huh?
98.
98. There you go. I thought 98, but that looks good. Uh, the other thing, talking to Bill Bushman, who's over all our trees, he asked me to put out a plea. Anybody that's out there putting up yard signs and nailing them into our trees, stop doing that. Do not do that to our trees, please. That came from Bill, you know. Do not drive nails into our beautiful trees. He takes it personally and so, please don't do that. Find some other ways to advertise, but don't drive nails into the trees to hang your signs. So, with that, we'll move on to public comments. Anyone from the public would like to come and talk? All three of you.
He kind of looks around saying.
We even have candy if you want to come up and say something. There you go. That's all right. Okay, I appreciate that.
Poor kid. Okay.
Consent items.
A motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing ordinance 20-19 abandoning an ease, utility easement.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is a utility easement that at one time had a sewer line in it out in the Canyon Creek Development. Long ago, we changed the road configuration and we moved. We're out there. This utility easement didn't get moved or vacated at that time and so, this is just a public hearing to abandon that easement. As you can see, the utility's been realigned into Marketplace Drive and Canyon Creek Parkway. There will be some commercial pads going here, as you can see, right next to the Walmart. So, we do need to go through the process of a public hearing, but the utilities have been moved and we just need to vacate the easement so that we can build some buildings there.
Okay. Since this is a public hearing, I entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone in the public would like to come and talk about this issue? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If there's no questions or comments, I'd entertain a motion.
I move, we approve ordinance 20-19 abandoning an utility easement.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilman Argal. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Scobes?
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Argal?
Aye.
Passes. Okay. New business ordinance 21-19 amending the appeal provisions of the government records management of access.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the state law concerning access to government records changed a couple of years ago actually and we missed it mainly because there's like four or 500 bills a year that pass and you can't keep up with all of them. Anyway, we've recently become aware of this and are bringing our code into compliance with the state law. So, under the older version of the state law, if we had an appeal from a GRMA request, GRMA being the Government Records Access and Management Act, that went first, the city managed it into the city council. The change says that the city council can't be an appeals board. And if we create an appeals board, which we don't have to, it can just go to the State Records Committee. But if we create an appeals board, it tells us how we do that. It is three citizens of the community, one of whom can be an employee, two of whom cannot and cannot be a government worker for another government entity either. One of whom needs to have some professional experience in record management. So, we're just following the state law and creating the appeals board. Since we have so few of these, I honestly can't remember the last time we had one. We've made that appeals board just an ad hoc committee. So, the manager by our ordinance will appoint that committee if it's needed. Then there's some timelines that we've set up that give them time to put the committee together and time to act on that. And of course, somebody's dissatisfied with the result of that. They have the right to appeal that to court. Questions about any of this?
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 21-19 amending the appeal provisions of the government records management and access.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints Real Estate Purchase Agreement.
We, as you already know, entered into a purchase agreement with the church to purchase the property that's just south of the city office building. That was for 1.15 million dollars. We, we anticipate that the use of that will be for a library, likely for the finance department and new council chambers. And as far as when that will happen, we anticipate that we would start construction in 2021 and then finish up in, sometime in 2022. The parcel is .9 acres and there's, maybe the question that the public may have is, why did the city choose to purchase the property now? We've, we've kind of hit on this in prior council meetings, but we've outgrown our current library. And so, there's a, already a need for a new library. There may be some questions as the public drive by and see the church building still being used. The church has asked if they can lease that back from us once we purchase it until, they have all the way up until September 1st, 2020 to use it. And so, there may still be a congregation that's attending there. This is really just to ratify the decision that was already made in a, in a closed session to approve this, this agreement. If you want to go to the next slide, Scott, on here is a diagram so that those at home can see where the new, the new library would be. I apologize, that showed up a little bit better on my screen, but you can see currently where City Hall is. That's where we're at right now. Well, those of us that are in this room, those that are watching at home are here right now. But across the street, east of here is the existing library and so the new site would just be across the street. And we feel like that would be a great location, center, as central to the city as, as possible, so. Any questions on this? So, what we're asking for is just to approve that purchase agreement.
Okay. Any other, if there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints Real Estate Purchase Agreement.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Do we have closed session?
Seth, do we have a closed session?
No, we don't have a closed session.
We have one item we would like to talk about. If we can talk about it just briefly, you okay? I don't have anything prepared. Do you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just about to break.
Annexations. This will be for annexation.
We were just about to break the record.
We were just about to break the record, but seven o'clock's good.
That young man brought good luck tonight with him.
Yeah.
He was hoping he could break the record. Still get credit for his class.
There's some folks that we've approached about annexing. We've talked about potentially doing a city-initiated annexation that would take the city's boundary all the way to I-15 in the direction of Leland. So, if you can picture 8,000 South, everything north of Revere Health, all the way to I-15 out in here. And most of the folks that aren't in the city that own property in that area, they've had discussions with city staff in recent years about annexing. Their biggest concern has been the SESD buyout. There's one particular property owner that's in the process of getting a building permit for Utah County right now and to build a home in the county. He's adjacent to the city boundary. He's adjacent now to city power and we're hoping to get some feedback from you tonight. He and his father are two of the larger property owners in the area and he's wondering about the prospect of annexing so that the property would be in the city by the time he finishes with his home. And whether or not it makes sense for him right now to contract with SESD to be his power provider or not. So, there is a little bit of a timing element here as he's trying to make some decisions within the next couple of weeks relative to building his home. And again, in all candor, I think we're, we're talking about a fairly influential family in the area. And from my perspective, it would be great for Spanish Fork City to annex this land now. Several years ago, Salem did. They annexed all the way to I-15, just on the other side of 8,000 South. I think the timing's good. We're, I think, getting much closer to being able to provide some of the critical services to this part of the community. And I'd love to be able to report back to this, this gentleman that he may want to hold off on committing to go one particular direction with power with the idea that he might have an option here in three or four months if we initiate an annexation process soon. So, the concept is pretty simple and it wouldn't necessarily pertain to this area. It could. It would be that when properties annex, Spanish Fork City in essence would front the cost to pay the obligation that we have to SESD, whatever that is, to purchase their facilities or things related to that. With the idea then that when those properties change use, when they develop, that at that point in time, we would be reimbursed for that expense. We've done something similar to this with an annexation that happened east of Maple Mountain High School a couple of years ago. That seems to work well. Frankly, I think it's very equitable that we approach things this way and maybe do some, some type of a pro-rata cost sharing, perhaps on a per acre basis or something like that. And I think it ob, excuse me, I think it probably removes the biggest obstacle that we have to growing in kind of a smart way in the community, which is property owners' hesitation, reluctance to front what sometimes is a very significant amount of money for them, which potentially would leave us annexing in a very piecemeal kind of a fashion, not necessarily looking out at a broader picture when we annex. So, I think there's definitely benefit for the community and for the city to come up with some type of a program, again, where we're fronting that, that expense. The downside is that we don't know when necessarily we would recoup that. But I think in just about every case, there would be that reimbursement to the city. In some cases, it would take quite a while, so it's just kind of off the cuff. That's the idea that I'd love to get some feedback on, just relative to that idea of us putting a program together that would allow us to front that SESD buyout cost to be able to annex properties, again, with that provision in place that the city would be reimbursed when properties develop then.
You, this road or this road?
Um, can you turn on the current city boundary? In essence, we're hoping to get something going on everything that would go from the current city boundary, which isn't necessarily real clean in this area, but taking everything that's not in the city now out to those two lines into the city.
Which is in our girl's boundary. It's all right there.
It's part of our annexation policy. I think it's just a matter of time.
I know, I know we talked about this previously, especially about that part of it. We, we talked. Five or six homes, but are they all willing?
Honestly, based on the feedback that we've gotten, I think if we can help them work around this upfront expense to annex, absolutely is the impression that I have.
The biggest, the biggest frustration for the home, for the landowner today is they're not doing anything. They're not going to change how they're using their land for a couple of years and so there's no value in them paying tens of thousands of dollars to just keep doing what they've been doing. For them, the value would come eventually as they, as they change the use. So, I think we settled on, can we come up with some mechanism where it would trigger it at development? And Junior's come up with what he thinks. He's getting more comfortable with how he would write that language and I think we're ready to say, we're ready to give you something if you're ready for us to give you that formal kind of policy that you can then chew on and, and we can, we can work and rework as it may need to be. But I think we're ready to do that following what, what Dave just outlined. But that's, I think, their biggest hurdle.
But that's, I think, their biggest hurdle. They aren't going to do anything different tomorrow. It might be five to 10 years before they do, but it allows us to apply things more on a grander scale, which is a lot easier to, it's easier to plan bigger areas than it is a little chunk.
Would we, we need to get utilities to those five or six homes then? Our utilities?
Yeah, we're, and we're capable of doing that. We've reviewed this with Chris and with the Power and Light Division as well, they're comfortable with it. We can, we can get there, we can get there relatively quickly, yeah.
And if this gentleman went forward with his home in the county, would he be, and then, and then we turn around and buy him out? Are there some costs that are going to get double paid for, so to say? Am I correct in saying that?
Absolutely.
Which is what we're trying to avoid.
That's what we're trying to avoid here, so that would be.
Would be an advantage.
And I think this, this idea of us running it, you know, Chris and I have talked about this a lot. I think this is a fair way because it does put a burden on a lot of these people, you know, that want to come into the city and there's property there and so if we can help that, when they're ready to come in, then we can, we can get reimbursed. So the city's not out any money, but it's.
It's an asset that we're buying, we're using.
We're going to use.
Typically buying literal power poles, wires, transformers and things. We will turn around and use those assets, you know, we'll plug in our line on this side and provide power to the homes as it moves down. So we're not, it's not money that's lost, we're actually buying an asset for it.
So would that trick, so development would trigger the cost, but what, so if we pay $10 for that, then how do we, how do we?
Yeah, annexation would trigger the, annexation would trigger the cost, the payment.
Okay.
And then development would trigger the repayment. And we would say this area, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, or you can come up and say this, but let's say this area is 500 acres. We, we can take the cost, if it's $100,000, spread it around to the 500 acres and do some kind of a pro rata. It's this much per acre and as, as one acre or 10 acres develops, you know, whatever that math ends up being, if it was $1,000 an acre or $5,000 an acre, that development of a 20 acre chunk or a 50 acre chunk would have their pro rata share that they would then reimburse at that time.
Property owners would understand that, so if they start sell their property, that would be attached to it, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, I think part of the, part of the annexation study, we would make sure they fully understood that.
You're not, you're just looking for a direction tonight?
Do you have any concerns with us pursuing that?
I have none. I think this is the way we should do it.
Or me passing it on to this family that, I mean, again, they're trying to make some decisions right now.
And I'm okay with it. I, I just, I think they all, I hope they, you, I've heard rumors too, but I don't think that we've talked to all of them.
Right.
Down there, so that, that would be my, make sure that they are all, because that's great. It's going to be Spanish Fork anyway, just well get it done.
That's exactly what I'm hearing them say. They think it's inevitable, so they.
And we've got a place for a fire station, right? So we need to get building so we can use that, right Seth?
You know, just kind of relative to moving forward.
And we've had some big property owners down there have approached us about doing stuff down there so already, so I think this dovetails right into what we're wanting to do here.
Yeah, Seth just asked me to mention, you know, David Cloward.
Yes.
He has asked us to resuscitate his annexation petition for some land right here, so again, one of the questions that we're asking is how much sense does it make to move forward with 15 or 20 acres when it would not be that much more work to go ahead and move forward with the entire area now, so.
Hey, you got your marching orders. Any other discussions? Okay.
I move, we adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for being here. Hey, you lucked out, a short meeting and it still counts.
Third.
Is that yours? I was going to turn it on. Hey, Chief?